All right. Hello, everyone. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we are joined by Colin and Julie. Hi, guys. Greg and Amanda are on the road to somewhere very important right now. You'll get updates on that at some point in the hopefully nearest future, but safe travels to them. And hello to Jess, because you're going to see Jess. Anyway, we're really excited to be here today. We have some really cool updates to share with you. If you were with us last week, you're going to be familiarized just a little bit with some of what I'm going to talk about today. But there's also something really exciting and brand new, and you're going to get even more details next week when we have Chrissy from Grow Workspace here with us. We also have three live website reviews today. I know two of the people that I called out are here. If the other person does not show up, we will have space for another review. So if you really need some help today, if you need feedback on what you're doing, even if you haven't started building anything on your site yet, just go ahead and let us know in the Q and A or in the chat, either way. And we'll make sure that we get to you. This is a live session that is designed for us to roll up our sleeves and work together, right? Like if it's a question that we can answer really quickly, you know, we'll pop it off in the chat. Or rather, I say, we, Colin and Julie, while I'm here running my mouth, are, you know, steadily taking care of this thing because they're total pros at it. So anyway, but if there's something you want me to address, look at, evaluate, is in particular where you're copyrighting, your marketing, your design, things like that are concerned, here for you guys. All right. So today, we're talking about Aroma Sharing. This is one of our favorite times of year, you know, and typically going back to years now, I don't remember how many years, we'd have to ask Greg and Amanda, they're not here today. But typically, what we would be doing right about now is, or a little closer to convention, is we would be in Salt Lake City, right? And Aroma Sharing takes place right at, you know, during convention. And it started out as this really cool little gathering of oily entrepreneurs and people who had, you know, oil supplies, business supplies, books, things like that. And it's this amazing collection of vendors, and it's grown to an enormous, amazing event. And for the last two years, this year included, we have been honored to facilitate taking that event online. So Aroma Sharing, while you would normally go into an incredibly packed ballroom at the Hilton in Salt Lake City, you get to go and peruse in your yoga pants or no pants situation, all of the oily goods that you want. And you get to go learn about the incredible stuff that we have put together for you guys, new members and existing members from Get Oiling. And I want to talk to you guys about that today. So if you don't know about Aroma Sharing yet, this is the time to go and get your tools, right? Get the things you want to use to build your business, get your, you know, get your gifts, get your oily jewelry, get all of, get all the things, right? This is Christmas in July. Get your shopping done. aromasharingonline.com is where you want to go for this. We've got tons of oily vendors and business resources and so on. So just make sure that you guys check it out. And I'm going to go and show you guys what our booth looks like, because it's live. We opened up yesterday, and show you all of the specials that are in store for you. Then we're going to get over to some live help, Q and A. Again, if you are here looking for help today, if you're, you know, if you're stumbling upon a problem or you are stuck with something, or you can't get the thing on your site, just do the thing you want it to do, let us know. We're here to help you right now. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And again, thank you all for being here today. Thank you for the folks who have signed up for a live website review. Really, really excited to go over the work that you guys have been doing because it's awesome. All right. So we have a booth. This is our booth at Aroma Sharing. So you're going to see, we're actually a sponsor of Aroma Sharing along with Grow Workspace, iTovee, and Essential Gear Products, all incredible companies supplying Young Living brand partners and Young Living customers. So anyway, so this is, this is our booth. And what I want you guys to do, because there is a huge giveaway that we've put together in coordination with our friends over at Grow Workspace. And you have to pay attention and follow the right steps to enter yourself to win. And guys, if you're serious about growing your business, you want to win this. You want one-on-one time with me and Chrissy and get the tools and training that we use, the courses that we have for you to, like, I'm getting ahead of myself. Follow what's on this page, okay? So you want to come over here, play this quick video. It's going to, you know, kind of give you, if you guys don't know Get Oiling, get a little bit of our background, what it is that we have. If you've known people who are sharing who don't use Get Oiling yet, this is a really great thing to show them, bring them to our booth here. And if you give, if you actually refer people to Get Oiling during Aroma Sharing, that's actually going to get you some extra entries and some cool prizes that we're giving away as well. So come here. If you want to hang out, we are live during these times. If you see this little red thing on and it says online or live, I forget what it says, then you just got to click here and you can join us on Zoom and ask questions. That's throughout Aroma Sharing. That is through the 19th, our hours are currently through the 18th, though. This video is going to show you how to take advantage of all of the things that we're giving away on this page. So make sure you watch it. We're giving away rose oil. Guys, if you're here today, you are already a member of the Get Oiling community. You have your own Get Oiling system. You can refer new folks here and you can get an entry. You could also text in to get an entry. There's no purchase or referral even necessary. But when you get your own system, you're going to either get one entry for a monthly or five entries for annual. So there's a number of different ways that you can get this rose oil. We've given it away every year. And we're just, or well, every year I've been around, and it's been a really wonderful thing to give away. It's a full bottle of Young Living Rose Oil. Big deal. Okay. I talked about this last week. This is a really cool thing that we're doing. I have specifically partnered with and worked alongside people who work with me directly. So my personal clients who are leaders in this company, and they have offered up free training for you. Okay? So Jackie McLaughlin knows how to run this business. She's been doing it for almost 20 years. If you want to get her systems, learn how she works, she's giving it away for free. Okay? You can also get Jessica Domann's entire prospecting system and her Get Oiling follow-up plans. What she uses, when she uses it, to sign people up one to two times a week into Young Living as customers from her social. And then finally, our amazing, beautiful, wonderful friends over at Simple Grace Collective have created an opportunity page for you guys. Guys, it's so good. I sat and watched this video in 13 minutes. They do the most extraordinary job, I think I've seen yet, of someone delivering the Young Living opportunity. And it's not pushy, and it's just super nice, and it's got their wonderful faces. And you know what? If I was promoting the business opportunity, this is who I would want to be sharing it with my people, right? So if you don't know how to talk about the business opportunity, or you want to just be more duplicable, because pointing is more duplicable than being the face at the front of the room, you're going to get access to this. And P.S., I don't know if you guys have logged into your dashboard today, but maybe open up a new, or you're in Zoom, open up a tab in your browser and go log into your dashboard if you're a member right now. Because you're getting all of these things for free. If you're already a member with us, you are getting these things for free. Pretty cool? Log in, go check it out. You can get all of these things right now. How cool is that? Let us know in the comments. Are you excited about this? All right. Now, some of you guys may already know, some of you may have already done this. Leave us a comment if you have gone through the How to Move Your Groups Off of Facebook course. If you don't know about it yet, y'all, it's free. You're going to get access to this as well. And this is actually a complete course with templates designed to help you establish, if you don't have one yet, or move your Young Living serving groups to your Get Oiling site, to a safe place that you own, that is yours, that you get to run the way you want to. And you can power it with our content partners like Grow Workspace, right? Pretty cool. Now, if you join at Annual, Basic and Above, or you upgrade to Annual from Monthly, or you renew your Annual during Aroma Sharing, you will get a seat in my Personal Branding Intensive. I do this once or twice a year. It always fills up, and we always have people asking how to get into it after the fact. So this is the time to do this. You really want to do this. This is a small group live coaching that I'll be conducting in August. And what we're going to do in this program is to makeover your personal brand from the inside out. If you don't already know what your personal brand is, you're going to find out what it is, and you're going to learn how to put it out to the world so that you start attracting the people that you want in your business. You know what to say when you show up anywhere, not just on your website or on social. But if you're, you know, standing around at a barbecue and somebody says, well, what are you going to do? You're going to know exactly what to say, and they're going to want to know more, right? And you're going to learn how to work all of my systems around content production and time-saving efficiency. You guys, I'm a natural blue, and I taught myself to be ridiculously productive, and I give you away my secrets and how you can set up those systems in this program. You really want this, I promise. All right. So these are things you may already know, right? These are just features of our system that we're ready to share right out of the box. You don't need to be a pro. If you're brand new, you just put in your Young Living member number, the site's ready to go, right? Use the Customer Relationship Manager that we have. Our contact manager is at the core of our system. And we've got everything that you need to grow. For those of you who don't know, make sure you come over here and check us out at our booth. The shortcut to it is getoiling.com/convention2021. All right. Now, finally, we moved up with our friends at Grow Workspace to create an enormous giveaway for you. Okay, so let's learn about it. Now, one thing that you should know is that you can click on any of these images, except for that one, and go off to this page where you can get, because there's only so much that we're allowed to like fit onto our Aroma Sharing booth page. So we just got more over here for you. You can learn more about these specific things that are being given away right here on this page. All right. But we also have this great big giveaway. Let's go look. This is so exciting. Okay, so this is valued at over $3,000. What you're getting in the grand prize giveaway, three months of Get Oiling Premium. It's our most popular plan. Three months of Grow Workspace Platinum. That's all the Grow Workspace content. You want to build yourself a member area and fill it with all of the great Grow Workspace bundles. You want to make your sharing lightning fast and easy. We are a website for your content. They are content for your website, right? So we've got the whole package here. But then on top of that, right, you want to personalize, you want to make it your own, and you want to grow a business and work smarter, not harder, right? So you're going to get to do that when you get Chrissy's Build a Blissful Business course. This is Chrissy, founder of Grow Workspace, founder of multimillion-dollar brand, right? Get her course, and she is giving away three one-on-one strategy calls. And you'll get my Personal Branding Intensive, which you've just learned about. This is something that I have been doing in the network marketing profession since 2012. And you're going to get strategy calls with me as well. So it's not just going through the courses. We're going to go one-on-one and look at your work. And you guys, you're going to get my Get Oiling and Canva templates to use for your site. I have a trove of these things that I use when creating my client sites. You're going to get access to those things for yourself. Okay? Big deal, big deal. So there are steps here on how to enter and win, and they're all outlined here on the page. Now, remember, here's how you find it. You got to pay attention. The video on this page will show you how to get there. This is our booth at Aroma Sharing. Shortcut, getoiling.com/convention2021. Read it all, watch it all, scroll all the way down. And right here, this is where we're going to go to learn exactly what you need to do to enter to win this massive, massive giveaway. Now, one last thing on this. Grow Workspace is promoting this giveaway as well. And they have their own steps for you to enter and win. I would highly recommend that after you go through all of the steps for Get Oiling, you go do it for Grow Workspace too, because that's doubling your chances to win this giveaway, right? We are going to be combining and putting together everyone who has qualified for this into one pot. So make sure that you have gone through the steps for both Grow Workspace and Get Oiling. If you want to double your chances here. All right. So that is that. That's our grand prize giveaway. We're going to have Chrissy here next week to talk a little more about Build a Blissful Business, about Grow Workspace, and about this promo that we've put together. So if you guys have any questions, please go ahead and ask away. I know I see a lot of activity over here in the chat. Oh, if you've just renewed recently, get in touch with support. Just send us an email. There is, there's definitely a window that we honor. So just reach out. Awesome. Okay, we see folks coming back in. Okay, excellent. All right. So I see a couple of questions in the Q and A. If you have a question about your Get Oiling subscription, just definitely send a quick email over to support, and we'll be able to look at that on the backend. Okay. And in terms of who we have scheduled, if we, let me make sure real quick, because I have, Teresa, are you here? All right. So if Teresa shows up, she is, I'd really like to like show you guys her site. She's doing great work. But I do have Tina. Tina's here. So Tina, I'm going to bring you out to chat, and let's talk about your site.
Yes. Hello. Can you hear me?
Hi, I can. Yes. Thanks for coming on today.
I'm excited about what you just said, because I just upgraded like one and a half weeks ago from premium, from basic to premium. So excited that I can still get those.
Yeah, you will. Absolutely. That definitely qualifies you. So you are doing a multilingual site, I saw. So tell me a little bit about what kind of feedback and information you're looking for on this beautiful site. Did you, did you use, by the way, is this a template from Simple Grace?
Well, I used some of this stuff from Simple Grace. I didn't realize they had the template until I like basically finished it. So I made this, but I purchased some other things like the Simple Start and some of the, for the brand partners. So yeah, and I saw we have the same upline because some of the same pictures I had access to. So yeah. And I'm sure Colin and Julie both recognize this site, because I know I've emailed with both of them on several occasions. So thank you so much for the wonderful support that you've always given. I do try to work through the help things that are very helpful as well. So yeah, now I've kind of got my head around this. So yeah, like you said, I'm working kind of in two languages. So I was wondering and thinking about how I can best do this, but it also looks good on mobile. That's always the thing. That's why I kind of put the flag there, because you don't see the menu bar on the phone. So not sure if that's.
That's very smart.
Yeah, good. Yeah. I don't have the Simple Starts in German yet, so I'm probably going to translate it. So this is kind of what I've done. I've recently completed a certification to be a health and nutritional coach. So I've integrated that on the, on the coaching side. In general, I want to focus on overall health and wellness, and kind of like for people to conquer this and take this in their own hands. But I'm not sure if that's kind of too broad. And so, yeah, this is a template from the Get Oiling site that I've used here. I also have MS, Multiple Sclerosis. So like through the wellness path and overall healthy lifestyle, I'm doing well. So I don't, I don't really want to go down that MS path, but I don't know if I'm maybe not very specific enough on my site and just overall, kind of what this, what this looks like, and if there's a better idea on how I can do this in two languages.
So in terms of, you know, doing this in two languages, you're, you're doing this exactly as I would recommend you to. It's, this, this looks really good. Really, really like what you're doing here. In terms of your, your copy, you know, pertaining to what you're talking about, obviously barring specific mention of disease or, you know, any, anything that could wade into tricky compliance waters. What I would think about is, you know, is language for that person that gives them hope that maybe, maybe defies the conventional advice that they're receiving, right? So again, and you know, not knowing too much about your approach or who your ideal person is, you know, saying something to the effect of, you know, you are not your diagnosis, right? And having that be something that's, you know, just really big and bold that they see first. You know, you, something, let's see, better well-being through a healthy lifestyle is, I was speaking to someone about, about copy just, just a little while ago before I got on this call. I don't think anybody is really going to, you know, walk around like one of those A-boards on them and like, you know, stand on the side of the road and talk about how like vanilla is the best ice cream flavor ever. And vanilla lovers, like, I'm sorry, it's really lovely, but it's, 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 it's the base level, right? But if you go out and you're like rocky road forever, then rocky road people are going to be honking and waving. They're going to pay attention, right? And what we want to do is grab attention of the person who is the rocky road person, right? If we play vanilla, in a lot, a lot of cases, people will walk by. If it's something that they love, it's their favorite. They'll be like, oh, wait, maybe I want that even though I'm not hungry right now. That's kind of the idea here. So, so what I would really think about is what her priorities are, what her big roadblocks are. And, and if you could imagine, and you know, obviously, this, this is the person you're talking to is maybe you 1.0, right? Like you a little further back. But certainly, it could include other people that you know. What I would do is maybe ask those people, you know, if I had a magic wand and could, you know, just fairy godmother you right now, what would reality look like next? How would you feel? What would be different? What would be changed? And then take that language that they give you and use that in what you're saying here. Because there's a way that she or he, whoever, needs to hear this. And it's going to be less academic and a lot more street, a lot more personal. And, you know, we're, we're speaking to, you know, the, the girl who loves, I don't know, camping and Atari. And, and she's a very specific person, right? And she's very different from, you know, from, from the girl who would prefer to, I don't know, vacation and an all-inclusive. So like, be thinking about her as a whole profile and how you would speak to her if you, she was sitting across from you, and she just poured her heart out to you, right? And you listened, and, and you know that there are ways that you can help. That's the kind of, that's the place we want to be coming from when we're writing this. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So yeah, too broad right now. And yeah, I didn't, I didn't want to limit it just to MS. Yeah. Just put in that corner. And right now, I don't really, I mean, I don't really have essential oils or Young Living in there. I do have it on the, on the English homepage, and that's the only place I have it, is the Healthy Living. So I'm kind of also thinking, should I integrate that maybe, maybe as a kind of a member area at some point in that direction? Maybe it's right now. I mean, it doesn't call Young Living or Essential Oils anywhere on here.
Okay, yes.
Through the freebies, basically.
Sorry. Yeah. So, so this is a great opportunity for your content, right? So as you start blogging, which I really recommend that you do, because you, I mean, that seems like a great logical next step for you here, because you've got some, you know, you've got some things set up. Now you want to start creating that, that sort of substance that props up all of, you know, the pages that you have on your site, right? We can show up and say we're an authority all day. People need to go and read why, or hear why, or see why. And so your blog's going to be a really great place for that. So what, what I would do is, you know, have the promise here, you know, be that, you know, hey, I'm going to help you in this unique way that I know you need it, and I'm capable of delivering. And what you'll find on this site are ways that you can get this and get that and the other, and I share tips on X, Y, and Z. And so if sharing tips on X, Y, and Z are about a healthy lifestyle, then you blog about healthy lifestyle, and oils get to fall all over that blog. Because, you know, it's a part of a healthy lifestyle. It's not just an oily blog, because I'm sure there's a lot more that you do to manage, you know, your diagnosis and to, and to live a vibrant life outside of just oils. So, you know, be holistic in terms of what you include in content there. But that's where those opportunities are really going to come up. And that's where you're going to see a greater likelihood of people opting in to the freebies that you give away, right? Because we can say, oh, hey, here's a guide. And if they already feel that you're an authority, because maybe they follow, maybe you've got an active social and you post content there frequently, they come over and they're like, yeah, I already know this person. I want this thing that she's giving away. But if they're not in that category, right? If they don't already see you as someone who they are meant to follow, then having, you know, blog posts here that are talking about things that matter to them, and then having that freebie offered in the blog post, like, that's really going to be where the bulk of your leads would eventually be coming from. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And would you recommend doing like one blog in English, one in German, or how would you, how would you go about that?
That's a really good question. So, yeah, I would, I would duplicate it. So I would have it in English and have it in German potentially. Yeah. Let's tell you what, let's be in touch via email about that, because I am not read in completely into who all is maybe doing that on our sites and how that's best working. So I want to be able to give you some more specific feedback, not like, I'm not in the support inbox, and I don't see what everyone's doing. I just see it when it gets put in my face. So. So let's, let's be in contact about that. But I would recommend, at the very least, have it in both languages, right? So have, you know, hey, if you are, you know, English, English speakers, scroll down, right? You know, and then have, have your, your German, and then have your English and have it on the same post. You could certainly do that. That would be a very simple way to do it.
That's, that's how I've done it here in the, in the About Me page here. I kind of put, put it in English, not this part here, the overall that comes, I guess it shows up on the Healthy Living part, or, yeah, I think.
Got you. So this is, oh, it'd be like further down.
There. It's on the homepage. No, not there.
Oh, there it is. Yes. This is, this is totally fine. But yeah, in terms of what I would want to check in on, just before you start making a duplicate post in two languages, is, is that because it could be duplicate content in a more literal sense, I don't want to make a recommendation that could be negatively impact your SEO. So we need to look into that, get back to you. Don't want to give you bad advice here where that's concerned.
Okay.
Excellent. If we have any SEO experts in the community, reach out to me, please. Never been my thing.
Do you think it's a bad idea? Because I have like all, like different freebies. Like, I don't have the same, like here, I have like a cheat sheet list I have. And then if you click on the bottom, you get to that part. Is it too much? And then on the main website, I have the Simple Start on the English side. Is it?
Okay. So, so what I would say is, is this. You've got the Simple Start right here. Simple Start, Start to Natural Living. This is great. It's a, it's a really great place to start. It's done for you. So easy, right? This is a good thing to have. I would actually consider, if you have this as a site section, I think you do, consider making this a contrasting color so that it stands out, the background of this section of your page.
Okay.
Just so that it pops out a little more. So yeah, this is, this is fine. We want to be able to have something for people to take advantage of. And then, of course, if you have stuff down here, you know, that that's good too, because we're giving people an option to peruse. You have things to offer. They're at your site, because they're interested in what that means. If they're on your homepage, they want to know what you have to offer. So offer them a freebie, give them a few, you know, sort of opportunities to open different doors and go to different places. On your coaching page, let me go back here. On your coaching page, I can only read English. Okay. All right. So this is, this is fine. I think that this is cool. What I might also kind of recommend here is that you, again, do a little header line up here like you have for the Simple Start and offer a, offer a nutrition guide, have this stuff in the pop-up. And then make this page be about what coaching with you looks like, what the outcomes look like, what the process looks like, and what life can look for them when they're done. You have an opportunity to really kind of pre-sell what you're going to eventually be selling them when you land on this page. So take, take advantage of that to kind of give them the paintbrush and write, or, you know, paint the picture of what their life could look like after working with you. or, you know, paint the picture of what their life could look like, uh, after working with you.
So basically what I have, when you click on the bottom here on the landing page, have more of that on the, on the front page now.
Yeah. So, so what, here, here's what I would consider. I would move your about to the very bottom. Uh, have the section beneath this top one, uh, really talk about, again, like, you know, what coaching with you can entail with the outcomes can look like, that sort of thing. And then give them a call to action to pick one of these options.
Okay.
And, and that way you can start moving them through. And, and in an ideal world, you really do want to strategically kind of decide what your funnel looks like in terms of what phases they move through in what order, um, so that you can narrow down to one option here. Where you can, you know, get the freebie, the campaign that, that the freebie is connected to, uh, maybe starts to drip an opportunity to get on a call with you, or to join a Facebook group, or to whatever, move them toward the next step. You don't have to have every funnel door option available on, on the front pages of your website. Some things really should be kept for more qualified leads, right? So you don't want somebody, you know, most people are not going to just buy a 90-day reset from your website page. They're probably going to buy it because they got a free thing from you. They had a one-on-one call with you. They joined your Facebook group or something like that.
Okay.
Awesome. You're doing really great work.
Thank you. Yeah, I was, yeah. At the beginning, I was, like most people, I think I was overwhelmed, um, but I was, I was working on it on a separate website. And it was, I mean, looking back, that was, that was wasted and I was so much work wasted time that I focused on the, on a different website. Uh, now that I've, I've focused on this and, and not trying to do everything at once, um, I'm kind of going, you know, doing, doing a bit every day, moving through. There's so much and I'm so excited. There was a point when I, I'll admit, I was like, okay, I, I'm not doing this anymore. I'm going to, I'm going to cancel my subscription. And opposed to that, I, I, um, went from basic to, to premium just, uh, one or two weeks ago. So I'm, I'm all for this. So thank you so much for your feedback and, and Julie and Colin, for all of your great support. It's, it's, uh, it's amazing. I think, um, that's really helped me go through here and get through this too. And I've seen in, in, in the Facebook group, um, some people, you know, that, that have been like, oh, I don't know what I'm doing, but. I, I feel like I'm, I'm getting it. I'm getting it now and, and I feel, you know, I don't, absolutely don't know everything. And sometimes, you know, if I've tried, looked, looked through the help and I, you know, not able to, to, to figure something out, then I'll send you, shoot you a quick message and either of you will get back so quickly and that's it. Okay. I always thought the only little thing I was missing it for the next time that I'll know it. So that's the exciting part, because people spend so much money on websites and then they, they have to pay every time they want, you know, to correct a little typo. And once we get it, we can do all this stuff ourselves. So.
Yep.
Really. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Honored to be helping you on this journey and thank you for coming out and sharing today, Tina.
Thank you.
And yes, Julian, Colin, rock with email support. Yes. All right. Uh, Jolene, I'm going to bring you out. Good to have you back. How are you?
Great. Thanks. How are you?
Great. Great. It's good to have you. All right. So, uh, tell us a little bit about, uh, what kind of, uh, help you're looking for today? And then we'll hop over to your website.
So what I, what I've been hearing a lot from some people, um, are these, um, is this really cool feature that a different website has, where you can kind of create, um, a bundle. I have like a, a demo. I don't know if you can share my screen or whatever, but just so you can see it, but it's, it's where this, like, say I wanted to recommend, um, alkaline, inner defense and, you know, Ninja, then I can go ahead and grab those three items and then send you a link. And then you can click a box and have it go to the cart. And I don't know if all of that's possible. I just figure the system's so amazing that I'm just like, I'm sure that it's possible in one form or another. So.
Yeah. So, um, so that's something we've definitely reached out. The company that you're talking about has a contract with corporate. So then we don't, uh, they, they have a contract with corporate, like they, they are tied into Young Living and the VO directly, uh, in a way that we are not. Um, and that's a, that's a whole, that's a whole fun conversation on the backend. But basically, um, a couple of things. Number one, um, with the changes that are coming to the website, what, what I anticipate, we obviously don't have Greg here today. Uh, I don't know if you, you guys want to chime in on this. Um, what, what I fully expect is that by the time all of the changes are rolled out, you're going to be able to create your own bundles on your young living site, right? Like to actually personalize and create those things. And then whatever that link is, you would certainly have available in your good oiling system. Right now there is an app, which is fundamentally different from a website, uh, in terms of how you communicate with people and all that kind of stuff. There's some really interesting features, but there's also a lot of important data about apps that you should probably know before you rely on one, uh, for your business communications. People, um, like these phones, they offload apps, um, that you don't use frequently. Uh, and, and, and people mute notifications, they know, anyway. So, um, to answer your question about bundles, we don't have a way to do that currently. We anticipate that there will be a way for you to link from your website, once all of that's done, whenever that happens. Really no idea when that will happen. Uh, but what I can also tell you in this second piece here, um, the best way, best way, uh, for you to get someone started, even though, you know, these bundles are a really cool thing. Like it's, it's really cool that like all these changes that are happening mean really great things for your business, for all of our businesses moving forward. But, uh, the best way to get a new person started, no matter what new feature, the, the websites or the tech or whatever has. Jackie, if you, if you're here, I, I hear you clapping your hands and stomping your feet. The best way to get someone started and to keep them, uh, is, is, is to do this with them one-on-one.
And it'll always.
What?
To be with, to be with your person one-on-one, right? So if we are, you know, if we're getting someone started, we get them started because that's how we want to duplicate. Even if there's someone who says right now, I'm not interested in the business opportunity, I just want product. How you get them started matters because it's going to guide the way that they share. So if you just dropped a link in, uh, you know, in a social DM or something like that, or you've sent that, even if you send one via email or you have a link on your website, if they got started that way, they're got, they're not going to have the slightest clue about how they could start sharing. Or they're going to believe from the outset that they need something that they don't have. Which, you know, when you are a brand partner with this company, or really in truth, in this industry, in any company, all you need is your, your distributor link and a phone, uh, or, or sitting down next to somebody, uh, so that you can get them set up. So, um, so yeah, we think that the bundles are really cool. We want to be able to, uh, bring them onto our site at some point, but we're always going to advocate for what works for your business. And that's always going to be.
The other, yeah. The other thing I was thinking, because I do, um, in my, in my business, that's not young living business. Um, I do massage therapy as well as, um, I started live blood analysis, which is super cool. And I find myself recommending, yeah, it's super, super cool, very specific things. And I'm, so I'm thinking, I've already thought like, how can I, how can I recreate the wheel? Like this other thing that they're, they're doing, um, is that one page where you can, I, I use it a lot. It's like the pictures on one side and then the text here, and then you can flip it where the picture is on the other side and the text on the other side. And it can kind of pop in a picture of the product and then they can click that link anyways and it can bring them to YL. So I was thinking about doing that, um, and then just going from there. So I, I know that it's not, I feel like, you know, being able to go into the site when you're first starting is like foundational work. Actually being able to use a website anyway. So I was kind of like, it is a feature and I'm sure it could somehow, we can make it work, but.
You, you know, you know what would be, I think, even more effective than that. And I'm all for you using our website for everything. Uh, but, um, we're, we're talking about getting them to click a link and go from one thing to the Young Living site to make purchase of specific products. Why don't you make a PDF and add your Young Living link to those products in the PDF? That way the PDF is literally one, um, you know, it's one window. The browser is another window. Sometimes when you got the tabs, especially if you're on mobile, it gets a little more confusing, right? So.
Okay.
You can make yourself a PDF and, you know, have a picture of the PDF, like here are all the products that I recommend. Uh, have a picture of the PDF on your site, like you're talking about in those alternating sites. And then, uh, have it linked to that PDF. So they can download it. They won't lose the link because now they have the file. Um, you could email it to them as well if you wanted to. And, and what you're basically doing is creating ordering guides. I mean, that's all these bundles are anyways, you know? It's a, you know, sort of a shortcut to give them the recommended stuff. And it's a really effective way to increase sales for sure. So, um, you know, Canva is a really great place to do this. And you can create Canva PDFs, uh, with the Canva button from your good oiling site.
Ah, yeah, that's awesome feature. Okay. So.
Yeah.
Check. Um, can we talk about the, in my website, in the vault, I, you know, my sway links listed as topics, like learning topics. I have a trouble with, yeah, if you go into community.
Wrong one. Sorry. Community. Okay.
And then, yeah, go into, yeah, so I don't know.
Don't think I have a login for this. So let me, um, hold on just a second. I'm going to log into your account. Tell me a little bit more about what you're, uh, yeah, go ahead and finish what you were asking.
Okay. So when you log in, go to the VIP one. But then my issue is that when I click on a page, like, let's see, the one I have up is the Savvy Minerals. It's just, um, it's under the wellness topics. So we have it as the sway link embedded. And I'm not sure if I just didn't do it correctly, but when I go to scroll the sway link, it, the whole page scrolls after like an inch of the, yeah, go into wellness topics on the left. Yeah. And then just click any of them. Doesn't matter. Just click one. So now when you, oh, so it works with yours just fine.
If your, if your mouse is over the sway file itself, it'll scroll this way. If it's not, it'll scroll the page.
So I, when I'm doing it on my end, it is just on the sway. But it scrolls my entire page. Is it maybe because I use the trackpad on my computer versus, are you using a trackpad or using a mouse?
I'm using a trackpad on a Mac desktop. You may want to test it out on different devices. Um, but one thing that I recommend, uh, that, that I do, and I use this in, um, in my templates that my clients have, let me, members, no, what is that? Jane? Yeah, here we go. Um, let me show you what I do in here. All right. I'm probably not going to be able to sign into here. I'll just tell you what it is. Okay. So just put it, put a little bit of text right here that says trouble viewing this. Click here and then just, uh, click off to this link. So they can just open the sway in a, in a new window or in your tab.
Okay.
Yeah. Anywhere you put a sway in your member area or on your site generally, because I mean, it's, it's technology, right? Like there's always going to be a hiccup somewhere. You never know where it's going to be. So just be thinking about how that like stuff could happen. You know, if you're going to embed a sway, uh, because we've got scrollly stuff. And if you've experienced that, just, yeah, just put the link for them to go off and, and open it up separately. And that'll free solve that problem.
Can you just try the Savvy Minerals one? Just, just so. I guess we, I can confirm, I guess I could have gone into the one that you were just in too.
Where, uh, what do you have it under?
I'm not really sure. Where was it?
Uh, let's see, it's, I don't see the title in here.
It was, um, yeah, go to self-care, the self-care one.
Self-care, this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Please. Okay. Well, great. That makes me feel better.
Yeah. It's actually working just fine. Yeah. So, so I would, I would recommend trying this on a different device, but definitely just go ahead and put that, um, additional little bit of text there just to, just to, to keep, keep safe.
All right. Well, great. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you for coming out and chatting with us today.
Absolutely.
All right. See Sean, I agree with your intuitive thoughts on the YL, the YL and bundles. Would benefit while to have that feature. Uh, yeah, that's, um, what they're doing is a huge overhaul, you guys. So, uh, it, it definitely takes time. Not just, you know, it's not just copying and pasting code on a page, like that's completely recoding the whole monster site with all of the bajillion products on it. So, yeah, rather have it bug-free. And again, the, you know, at the end of the day, there's an additional hoop to jump through sometimes to get your person started. But once they get started, don't they stick around? This company has ridiculous retention rates, ridiculous. Actually, this is one of the things that Janelle and Sarah shared on that opportunity page that all of you guys are getting for free. If you're members, sign into your dashboard, click on that link and get it. Uh, but, uh, but Richard Brooke, uh, he, he's been in the industry for longer than, uh, longer than I've been alive. Uh, and he, I think everyone here probably, uh, but he, um, he's owned several companies. And he was proud of his retention rate of eight percent. That's it. That was, that's a big number in this industry. There's a lot of holes in the bucket fundamentally in this industry. A lot of people go in, go out, a lot of companies are less product focused and they bleed people. Because they're like, oh, well, I'm not making any money. I'm not buying any more product. Young living doesn't work that way. That's not the culture here. Forty percent. That's insane. So guys, get, jump through the additional hoop, get them signed up. If you got to take down their credit card information and, and their, their, their information for, for signing up, write it down and do it for them later. Do it that way. It doesn't matter if, the, the website's going to go down sometimes. It's going to be a while until this thing is finished, baby. I, I have no idea what your timeframes are, but like the products are the same. So just do whatever you can to get someone started who says they're ready. Facilitate that in whatever way, uh, you can, because once you do, you've got a forty percent chance of that being a customer for life. And like even outside of this industry, that's really, really good. So do whatever it takes. Uh, don't make it hard, because it would be, uh, it would be a shame for you to lose that. Really, really cool. Forty percent. Okay. Uh, we had a few questions here. Camelia, I have worked with those who were scheduled. If you're still here and you would like a quick review or have any questions, uh, then, uh, then definitely let us know. I'll bring you out live. Uh, okay. Is there a session next week during convention? You know? We haven't talked about this.
It's funny, as soon as that comment came up, I like looked around, like, I was like, I asked Tanya, I was like, did I mention anything? Cause I don't even remember if we talked about this. Greg?
When we do this, uh, in person in Salt Lake City, of course, you know, where Thursday is included, that usually happens. Uh, we'll have something pre-recorded. Um, but we are, you know, we are conducting aroma sharing right now on the good oiling site. So, um, you know what? I have, let me, let me pull up my calendar for next week. Uh, yeah, I mean, so, uh, we'll get back to you. There aren't any website reviews scheduled. Uh, if the availability is there, good oiling.com/websitereview, go grab it. Uh, but in the event that we are not live next week and we'll have to powwow with Greg and Amanda, guys have been really busy trying to get all these vendors pages up. And like, these guys have been, like, it's, it's been a big, big, uh, month. It's been a big month. So, uh, so we'll, we'll, we'll let you know. Oh, wait. Yes, actually, sorry. Chrissy is coming on next week. So yes. Yeah, I, I already said that at the beginning of this call and Chrissy already said yes. So we're going to go live next week. We'll be here. Me, these guys, maybe hopefully, uh, whoever, but like, I know Chrissy and I will be here. That was a really long trailing, uh, final answer there for you, Berla. All right. Um, grow workspace with one W, G R O workspace.com. Uh, those are our friends at Grow Workspace. And actually, if you go to the Get Oilig homepage and then, uh, if you click on, was it like our FAQ or something? There's a page that has our partners there on that page. So our content partners are people who make stuff that plugs into your good oiling account or people that we, uh, you know, who, who have stuff that we know will help you with what you're doing, uh, with good oiling and young living. Okay, um. Fine. All right. Ilka, I'm not entirely sure. I think that was, um, that was on a website we were looking at earlier. There will be a replay. Uh, she's doing lots of cool stuff, but what, um, I think above those squares, she had a Parallax section. So there's like an image background. She's doing lots of cool stuff, but what, um, I think above those squares, she had a Parallax section. So there's like an image background. Little bit of text, but Parallax, uh, you scroll down the page, the image stays the same. So it kind of moves through the image. It's a pretty cool thing. If you look up, uh, on our YouTube channel. The, um, section backgrounds or you click the little question mark. In your, when you're logged into your dashboard and type in section backgrounds, we have a full training on that that Jess and I did. Uh, on all of the different ways that you can set it up and how to use it on different devices and all that kind of stuff. Like you need to hover. Well, uh, Camelia, I, I guess, uh, raise your hand for me real quick. Oh, you did. I'm going to allow you to talk here. Why don't you go ahead and let's chat. You feel like you need a do-over? Tell me what you mean. Tell me what you got in mind and let's get you.
Well, hello. Thank you very much. Well, you know, I've been here hanging, you know, just. The program is phenomenal. Look at all the pieces and all that you put into it. And, and I could see in your eyes and it, you know, and the other folk how you just think in this way. Your brain is wired. It comes in. And your execution queens and kings are persons and fellows or whatever the right term would be. And then there are those who have such a heart and desire to do it, who's to keep pace with all the things that. Life is bringing and mom and I have it. I've, I've invested a lot of money to just kind of stay connected. Kind of resonate with the other person and I, I so in my heart want to succeed. It's so in my heart, need this to work. I'm sorry, just, I just buried my son and my sister as stage four cancer. And she's just recently widowed. And if I could, I feel like if I could just connect, get these things up. I know that we have a wonderful product. I partnered with you. I probably would grow. I've partnered with this. I've done with Dean, with Tony, you know, I keep partnering, but. Obviously, I'm sorry, it's just this piece. And I wanted, I needed, you know, I feel like my, right now, my sister's life. Um, because it's in God's, I feel like if I could just move, it would connect. And then I could maintain the right, not always, but I could move because I. You know, where the doctors say, no, it wouldn't have to be, oh, you don't qualify for this. I could just do it. And then with burying my son who died unexpectedly and all that that brought. It's like just the thought of, okay, you've done a great job because I gave some feedback of just being able to touch it, you know, to go through, but. And here yet. Still I am. And then I realized, wait, my site is all about, I wrote all about me when I first started and I looked at some of the, I reviewed. Like today, some of the things you did, like, oh, these people are beautiful. Sites that look different from, I thought it was a big deal when I finally got the about me page and I realized. By the time I finish, I'm really behind because it's not what you're doing. Now, I know now it needs to be, what is this person? Why are they going to say yes to coming here and work with me? And I guess. I'm in a different place when I realized when I was looking during your break of what everybody else is doing that. Not comparing myself to them, but realizing based on where you are and what's going to connect. But I'm not there. And that's why I wrote, I, I guess I need to do something different, but yet I. It look like all the pieces and all these things I'm paying for and all these places desperately seeking that one of them needs to work for me. I really see that you're putting all those pieces and connecting them in this place. And. I, I guess at the end result is not you, but boy, you know, if I, I thought, oh, if I won that thing, then they would help me. They would see and with my voice, they could take my voice and they could put it onto. This platform, the paper, and then it would do that. And then a thousand people would say, wow, that's yours. Great. And then it would help others. But in the meantime, I, I, I appreciate what you have there. You'll. If you go to my site, you'll see that I have your basic piece and I was depending on the body systems and everything you have. And then I wrote this long thing. About me, I finally found a picture, got it connected because technically I'm a thing. I was so tickled. And then I see some of the other things I thought. Wow, Jess, when you thought it was safe to move about the cabin.
Amelia, you are not behind.
You know, I wrote to Greg struggling. And there I am with my long story that really, if they want to know about me, great, but really. They're not really coming, I realized, to learn really about me unless they choose to connect with it. And I wanted to change this woman because I sent it to people just to look and they said, oh, we thought that that was you. And then it comes down, no, no, that's you leaning over. So I just, I'm at the beginning. Perhaps if I win that thing, then I will be. Your poster child of. How to connect. But in between time, this is, this is what I've done and. Um, and then I was just relying on the beauty of. What you had and trying to connect people with the affiliate because I'm at the, I'm not a basic, I'm, I send it to Colin, I'm somewhere else. Uh, in between. And, um. It's just for the rest of, I guess, some of us are in a different category, but thank you.
Yeah, no, you're first. I would like to continue a conversation privately if you're open to it. Uh, just shoot me an email. Ashley@goodoiling.com, please, please send me an email. I've, I've actually got some availability this afternoon that I wouldn't normally have, like, please just send me an email. I'd, I'd like to talk with you some more.
Absolutely.
Okay, so first importantly, like you've done something extraordinary here. Writing about you. Telling your story is a brave thing and it's a difficult thing. And it is one of the first things that we can get absolutely hung up on. You have scaled a high mountain. And you need to know that and, and you need to celebrate that. You should and deserve to celebrate that. So please, queen. You scaled a mountain. First, right? Second. And this is important. Absolutely. Importantly, what you have here, as it is just as it is right now, is a way for you. To further connect through the conversations you're already having, right? This site and really any of the tools that you have are not designed to do the heavy lifting. They're the back brace, right? They're the, they're the support systems. They're the structures. Your, the, the heavy lifting in your business or your relationships. And, and, and you carry those things by communicating and sharing. So right now, this is a tool that you get to use. To connect people. So if you're having a conversation with someone and they want to know. Maybe, you know, they learned a little bit about oils, but they want to know a little bit more about what the opportunity means. You send them to your website. Tell them to click opportunity. You already look like a pro. You didn't make this. You don't have to make this. This is done. They get, they watch this video. They get to read this stuff here. They learn, oh, look, that animates. Like you've got this. It's already done, right? I don't know if you've started blogging yet. Import the Young Living blog for now. We can show you how to do that. That's actually, that's, that's actually a very simple thing to do in your system. When you're logged in, if you go into your dashboard or really anywhere on your site, you see the site setup progress. And your, um, I think it's in take action. Yeah. So here's, here's the blog post. Uh, if you go over to your blog.
Oh, I think I might have put young, I may have chosen anything that chose that made it, you know. Done for you. I may have that down at the bottom.
There we go. Okay, great, great. So I'm not sure why I didn't see this showing up on your site under blog. So let's, you know, maybe we'll, we'll figure that out. Uh, on the backend and support. Let's just have a conversation later today. Uh, and, and we'll figure that out. But look, with what you have on your site right now. This is a way for you to connect, to make a bridge from the conversations you're having and where someone says. Oh, no, I'd actually be really interested to hear what you have that could help me. And you say, great. Then you set up an appointment with them. You come over here. And, and you go to your Zoom meetings. You schedule yourself a Zoom meeting with this person. You send them the link, right? Send it, click send, decide who it goes to, send it to that person, right? And then you sit down together. You open up your screen, you share this, you scroll through. You tell them they, they're, you know, feel free to, you know, to peruse and read this about section. I'm going to leave this link with you when we're done here today. Uh, let's look through and watch these videos real quick. They do, uh, they do a better job of sharing this than I, than, than I can. And even if that's not true. It's, it's the, the better thing to do because people feel better about seeing that like, oh, you don't have to do all the talking, right? We're talking about duplication earlier. So you scroll through. You look like a pro. You've got all this information here. Use this as a presentation tool. And then you say, because you've already had this conversation, maybe they're, they're interested in something to support their digestion. So then you point this out and you say, okay, here's some of the things that, you know, that, that are really popular. You know, there's another one I'd like to show you. Let's go over and check that out together. And then you show and you share. Just use, use what you have because you have enough, you are enough, you don't need to do so. That comparing thing, you're on to something. You don't need to do more. You need to do the connecting with people. That's, that's the most important thing. You can have every bell and whistle on your website and never bring in, in a new customer and never change a life. Right? You don't need bells and whistles to change a life. Right? And that's what we're here to do. And then let, let the site grow with you. Right?
And so people, so when people say your website, this is my webs, then this is my website?
That's right. Yeah, this is your website. And it's got all this great information on it and, and we can add additional links inside of your website. So let's just say. You got somebody that's really a little more interested in sitting down with you and learning about makeup or skincare. Let's go over to our leg builder links. And let's create one. We're going to keep this empty because this is going to be somebody that you sign up. And we're going to make this, we're going to go to makeup and we're going to call it makeup. And I don't want a landing page. I'm going to hit create link. So now when you're going to sit down on that Zoom call or share a link with somebody, you're going to hit view right here. You're going to sit down and, oh, look at this website. Look at this. It's fancy, right? Look at that. Right? And you can keep scrolling and there you are. This is your website. There's videos here that are already done for you and you use this to share. And honestly, this is better than any site I can build.
Right? No, and that's, you know, that's definitely why Phil and I, the, and that's very helpful. My thing is the health and. Wellness and you had that so beautifully there with the systems. And then I have a team of people that are, I written, I want to move off of. Facebook, some of them don't have Facebook. So I have, you know, three hundred or so. People, some with all the things we've been dealing with, the kind of dropping off, I want to get back to that, you know, retention. And I actually in here was able to use the Zoom so that people could have, um, you, when you zoom down, I saw it. I had the, the link there Sunday. The sixth Jacob's funeral. So I actually use this Zoom through here as a means of having people. To join who couldn't, uh, be with us. So I thank you for that. That's. I, I guess you call that a bonus on top. So we're able to share. I want to bring the team off of the Facebook because they don't have. Some people don't have that. So we could put those resources here so I can. I can use that time in a better way to not repeat and to do that. And I think that's a piece of where. Uh, would be really important, uh, to be able to do that and then use this in an effective way. And I, I really appreciate it. The work that you guys have done is tremendous and your hearts have been, and I've. Just want to get all wheels moving in the same direction. I can also save money by not pouring into all these other places, you know, no more shiny. I'm going to focus and I want to be able to tell my team where I'm focused and they're going to ask me so I can get this up. Then I can have them to duplicate and I don't want people just going every place. So I am looking and honing it down and it's coming. Our roles are leading to, you know, you and grow because you collaborate. Together. If I can get it, it will shine and it will help other people. And it, it really is important for, for personally and. Professionally to be able to do that. And I just did recently make another little mission statement thing of how to help. But. Anyway, I feel like all those pieces can be here and I appreciate it.
You're closer than you think. You're so much closer than you think. So I, I look forward to hearing from you. I, I want to have a conversation with you as soon as you're ready. Okay?
And can you tell me one more time I have? No, I have a pen in my hand.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's Ashley@goodoiling.com.
Oh, oh, I got that. Okay. Thank you very much. And thank you for all the support. I see that popped up in the chat. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. I didn't mean to roll. Or to just kind of came out. So thank you.
We appreciate you and honored that you're a part of our community. Look forward to talking with you soon, Camellia. All right, you guys are wonderful. You guys are so wonderful. I'm, I'm like, I'm, I'm about to like cry again, reading all of these amazing comments. You guys are just the best. Okay, so, um, there was one more question here and, and by the way, guys, I, if you put a question in the chat, I'm probably going to miss it. I have one here in the Q and A. Um, Allison asks, do you have a favorite content provider for beginners? I've had for workspace and love it, but I don't use it much. So, um. I am not partial. I can say that much. It really depends on your, um, on, on your personal communication preference and style. Yeah, that's, that, that's a hard call. They're all very reasonable in terms of, of what they ask. Uh, I know that Grow Workspace certainly has the most voluminous body of content, uh, and they do have a free plan. But you can also get started with Modern Companion, uh, for a very reasonable price. Or, uh, YL Customer Delight, also incredibly reasonable. I know that, um, Modern Companion is, I think, focused a little bit more. On, uh, giving you the tools to just kind of keep people engaged on a more personal basis as opposed to sending class. Teaching type material, which would be similar to Grow Workspace. So if that's your style, maybe that's something you would be interested in. I think that YL Customer Delight does something similar to that as well. So I, I just really recommend trying them. Uh, because they're all really, uh, really affordable and they're really wonderful and supportive. And, uh, yeah, so I just in, in terms of like member supporting content. Now, we do have other content partners, right? Like we do have other folks like. Uh, like our, our friends at Simple Grace Collective, who creates content for your site, right? So, uh, you saw, uh, the first review we did today had the simple or second review we did today had this, the, uh, Simple Starts to Young Living guide. Or was it first? I forget. Anyway, um, they had the simple start to Young Living. That was pre-made. Right? That's something that they have made for you. So it's not necessarily something you share with your members, although they do have a member area option too. So. But yeah, it's just try, try them out. I love them all, every one of them. All right. Do we have anything else, guys? Do you have anything you want to share? Oh, the link for the aroma sharing booth. Yeah. Goodoiling.com forward slash convention twenty twenty one. All right, um, y'all are the best. Yes, my email is Ashley@goodoiling.com. Now you know. It's not, not that hard to figure out. I do answer my emails. So anyway, um, thank you all for being here and for, um. For sharing, uh, for being wonderful. Thank you, Julie, Colin, you guys are rock stars. Oh, but, um, my, my Van Halen hair situation, you guys, or Mariah Carey, I don't know, take your pick. Really old house. We don't have central AC. Uh, I have a fan. So I'm looking like a music video today, apparently. Yes, I grew up on Van Halen. Let me age myself here. All right. Colin's a big fan.
Massive fan.
All right, we love you guys and, um, I'll certainly see you next week. Maybe the only one showed up, shown up to the party with Chrissy. Up to you guys. I hope that you all, uh, come or watch, uh, the replay. We always have replays. Check our YouTube channel or get on the list, goodoiling.com forward slash weekly work session. We'll see you all next week. Bye.
See you guys.